Buenos Aires, the Committee on Environment, Revenue and Taxation, Labor Procurement, Statistics Research and Planning is calling this public hearing to order. The time is now 2:10 PM, Monday, February 27, 2023. In compliance with open government law, notices of this morning's hearing were published in the Guam Daily Post and provided via email to senators, stakeholders, the local media and posted in the Government of Guam Public Notices website, Monday, February 20, 2023, for the five-day notice and Saturday, February 25, for the 48-hour notice. I'd like to acknowledge my colleagues that are here today, Senator Tom Fisher, who's my vice chair, as well as Senator Telo Taitigui. The purpose of this virtual, I'm sorry, the purpose of this public hearing is to receive testimony on Bill Number 1-37, sponsored by myself, Senator Sabina Flores Perez. It's an act to amend Section 24105 of Chapter 24, Title 11 Guam Code annotated, relative to excluding the value added to buildings from the installation of photovoltaic solar panels and roof tiles for the purposes of levying real estate taxes. The second item on the agenda is Bill Number 17-37 COR, sponsored by Senator Telo Taitigui, co-sponsored by Senators Joanne Brown, Sabina Flores Perez, Roy Canata, Jesse Lohan. It's an act to add a new Section 77103 to Article 1 of Chapter 77, Title 12 Guam Code annotated, relative to ensuring the fiscal responsibility by limiting the total authorized amount of tax credits each year to the amount set aside by Ilas Satura in Guahan as a general fund reserve deficit reduction rainy day fund. The third item on the agenda is to hear testimony on Bill Number 18-37 COR, sponsored by Senator Telo Taitigui and co-sponsored by Senators Joanne Brown, Sabina Flores Perez, Roy Canata, Jesse Lohan. It's an act to add a new Section 77103 to Article 1 of Chapter 77, sorry, Title 12 Guam Code annotated, relative to providing for responsible management of public finances by implementing a 10-year sunset provision for all tax credit programs. The final bill on the agenda is Bill Number 19-37 COR, sponsored by Senator Joe Esten Augustine. It's an act to temporarily waive the levy of taxes pursuant to Section 24103B of Article 1, Chapter 24, Title 11 Guam Code annotated, relative to the real property improvements valued at $1 million or more. Rules of conduct is as follows. Those will be called to testify in order of what we have here on the sign-in sheet. Please state your name for record-keeping purposes before you give your testimony and if you have an organization, a position for record, if relevant. Senators will be given the opportunity at the end of each panel to ask questions and please confine your testimony to the substance or nature of the agenda. And now to begin the agenda. Bill Number 1-37, sponsored by myself, Senator Sabina Flores Perez, is an act to amend Section 24105 of Chapter 24, Title 11 Guam Code annotated, relative to excluding the value added to buildings from the installation of photovoltaic solar panels and the roof tiles for the purposes of levying real estate taxes. Notices were sent to the Director of Revenue and Taxation, Director Daphne Shimizu, as well as the General Manager of Guam Power Authority, John Beneventi. So the fiscal note states that that the Department of Revenue and Taxation, site DRT's Real Property Tax Division, currently does not assess taxes on such improvements nor on energy-efficient air conditioners or appliances due to its depreciative nature and thereby conclude there's no fiscal impact to real property tax revenues upon the enactment of Bill Number 1-37. Okay, so I'd like to give a brief introductory remarks, but before I do that, I'd like to recognize Senator Chris Barnett as well. Thank you, senators. Okay, so a brief introduction. Bill Number 1-37, the aim of Bill Number 1-37 is to help homeowners cope with the rising cost of living due to fuel and electricity costs by exempting additional real estate tax valuation by installing solar panels. The money families save on their power bills can be used for other important needs and it is circulated within the local economy. The National Renewable Energy Lab states that for homes that have installed solar panels, reducing energy costs and carbon emissions, the home values increase by $20 for every $1 saved on energy bills. For example, if a solar energy system saves $700 per year, the value of the home increased The environmental benefit for our island is also another major consideration of Bill 1-37. Reducing greenhouse gases through renewable energy helps mitigate climate change, an existential threat to the life in the Pacific Islands. Bill 1-37 can also aid the island's transition to renewable energy by exempting the additional real estate tax valuation due to the increase in the value of buildings owned by individuals or businesses that may result from the installation of solar panels. At the individual level and community levels, Bill 1-37 is a measure that increases the resiliency of our community. I look forward to the discussion and testimony and the open dialogue. Thank you. So I would like to now call upon Deputy Director Marie Lizama as well as Carlos Bordalio from, I'm sorry, Director, Deputy Director Marie Lizama from Department of Revenue and Taxation and Carlos Bordalio from GIDEA. And if there's anyone else here to testify, I would like to invite anyone else up to Good afternoon, thank you for being here, deputy. You're recognized.
Good afternoon, Buenos Aires, Senator Perez, Senator Fisher, Senator Barnett and Senator Taitigui. Thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony on Bill 137, which proposes to address the value of solar panels impacting real property taxes. And as Senator Perez had mentioned, as indicated in the fiscal note for Bill 1-37, if enacted, there will be no impact on real property tax revenues as the Real Property Tax Division currently does not assess taxes on such improvements.
All right. Thank you for your testimony. I'd like to call upon next Carlos Bordalio.
Thank you, Senator. Hafaday, Senator Sabina Perez and members of the Committee on Environment, Revenue and Taxation, Labor Procurement and Statistics Research and Planning, and thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony on Bill 137. The Guam Economic Development Authority appreciates the intent of the bill to encourage investment in renewable energy in Guam by exempting additional real estate tax valuation due to the increase in value of the buildings resulting from the investment made in the installation of solar panels. The policy of the government of Guam is to increase renewable energy use and encourage investments is fundamental to preserving Guam's natural resources and increasing our dependence on fossil fuel. Thank you for your time and attention regarding this testimony and if you have any questions for myself or GIDEA during this bill, please feel free to contact me.
All right. Thank you for your testimonies. So I guess the question is, for both agencies, are you able to support this type of, this bill? As far as, with DRT especially, right? Because this is something that you're going to be administering. Do you have the administering capacity at this time to accomplish this?
Well, you know, as you are well aware, historically, we've been short-staffed, you know, at the agency. So if this, you know, were to take effect, I mean, assuming that in the future, there is an impact on real property taxes, there are likely things that we will need to, you know, to be able to monitor and so forth and so we hope that we will have the manpower to be able to monitor the program should things change such that it is included in the, in the increase in real property taxes. I should add that we've checked other jurisdictions and what we have found is that while the panels do or are included in the value of the property, the other jurisdictions don't currently or they have a hold on assessing real property taxes on, you know, the portion that the homeowners have paid. So for example, if you paid $30,000 to install solar panels, you know, it likely will be taken into consideration at all with regard to the value of your property, but it likely in other jurisdictions, what it is is you are not being assessed an increase in property taxes.
Yes, so there were other jurisdictions that already implemented this measure?
Yes, I believe.
Are we referring to those jurisdictions that already have this in their?
I believe California has one in place right now and they are, that is in place until 2025. I think we also took a look at Texas. Texas does not assess, you know, on the increase of the property value and there are other jurisdictions as well.
Okay, and Deputy Director, so when is the next evaluation due as far as, you know, reassessing the?
So the last one that was done was in 2013 to, for 20, to take effect 2014. And so we are, we have put into our budget, you know, the request to carry out one this year.
Okay. All right. Thank you. So Mr. Bordalio, so thank you for your testimony, first of all, and supporting this measure. I guess to help assist homeowners, is there any program that's available, so any kind of subsidies that can help assist homeowners in purchasing solar panels?
I would have to defer that to possibly Guam Housing Corporation, but as of Yeah, not a GIDEA. Thank you.
I know there is also the interest, sorry, the Inflation Reduction Act. I believe there's a lot of capital improvement projects related to renewable energy. Is that something, I know there, we do have a point of, point of contact regards to those, those recently passed legislation. Are you familiar with any kind of initiatives within government of Guam that can help subsidize these things for homeowners?
Not at this time.
Okay. All right. I think those are my questions initially, so I'd like to open it up to my panel. Senator Fisher, if you have any questions?
Yes, good afternoon and thank you all for attending. Ms. Lizama, when you said that Department of Revenue and Taxation does not tax these sorts of improvements?
That is correct. It was not, when the 2013 revaluation was done, that it was not taken into consideration.
Okay, I, you know, confess my ignorance here. Is there a laundry list of some sort that Revan Tax uses when assessing property values?
Yes, and if I, if I may, I'd like to bring Benedicta Toigui, who is our Real Property Tax Branch Administrator.
Let me ask the chair.
Yes, please, please come to the table. If you can restate your name.
My name is Benedicta Toigui. I'm an Administrator for Real Property Tax Division.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Toigui. Thank you for coming up to testify. I just asked Ms. Lizama if, when your department assesses property value, whether or not there are certain, I guess, points you look for, you know, does it have an outdoor kitchen, that sort of thing? The property?
Okay, the property values on real estate is improvement, improvements on land and land. Okay, when the revaluation took place in 2014, solar panel wasn't in place here in Guam, so it was never taken into consideration for valuation of real estate. Now, in my research, solar panels may increase real estate value, however, for tax purposes, those are excluded and that's where the owner or whoever may take the exemption on the solar panels only and only that portion of the solar panel. The real estate value will remain the same as before the installation of those solar panels.
Well, in the next property evaluation, do you foresee including solar panels in the assessment?
If we do include solar panel, we have to request for that specification only, also, I'm sorry, include that to include solar panels.
Okay, and who would you ask that question of? The homeowner or?
We would, whoever the, you know, the contractors, whoever solicits their bid for revaluation. We will request that, we may request that as part of the bidding process as one of the, the sort, whatever, one of the things they need to do, do for the revaluation.
But if I live in Latty Heights, if you were, wouldn't you, in assessing my property value, compare what I have with all my neighbors?
That is the role of the, whoever is contracted to do the revaluation. And in actuality, the way they do the revaluation is they do comparables.
Yeah.
Yeah, they do compare values, they check values within your area. It's, they do, they do appraisals the way they would do as a private appraiser, but they equalize the value.
Okay. Now, would you use the word contractor? Does DRT use a contractor to perform property assessments?
Yes.
Okay, you don't do that in-house? You hire somebody?
No, we do. They give us the guidelines on what to value.
I'm sorry?
And they give us the guidelines of what, what to value and the cost of those extra amenities.
Okay.
If we were to, if they were to be part of the taxation process.
Okay, okay, but thank you. That's, that was news to me. I didn't realize that you didn't do the property evaluations in-house, but, okay. This will give, because the solar panels, this will prevent, I suppose, a contractor going into the future from including solar panels in the total value of the property, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Because what I'm wondering is, you know, when the homeowner sells that property, well, by putting, as you all know, by putting the solar panels in the homeowner's basis in the property increases, which would decrease the amount of money you would be able to collect on sale in such things as capital gains and income taxes. I, I don't know if you have a comment on that. I mean, in a way, I like the bill because I, you know, I really want, I'd love to see Guam go solar, but I don't want to, you know, I don't want to give away, I don't want to give away the farm here.
Well, yeah, I like the bill. I like the bill if it will increase the aggregate value.
Okay, but you, but you wouldn't be able to recover the aggregate value. And I don't know if, Ms. Lizama, maybe I'm just off my nut here, but if you want to.
No, no, okay, okay. When we did our research in other, like Texas and California, solar panels, it says it increases the value of the property, but not real estate value, it not, not the assessed value for taxation.
Okay.
Yeah.
I guess, okay, my, well, yes, ma'am, Ms. Lizama, did you wish to comment?
Oh, no, I just meant that it didn't, it didn't increase the related property value.
I see.
Or, I'm sorry, the taxes.
Okay. And that's because we, for policy reasons, decided not to include?
For one reason or another, it was not included in the 20, it was actually the 20, it carried out in 2013 for the 2014 tax year.
Okay. And I know it's very difficult, I mean, I know it's very difficult to project this, but because the homeowner's basis increased, the general fund is potentially going to be taking a hit because we will lose on potentially income tax from the sale of the home and also capital gains. And of course, I don't, I'm not real sure how you could address that because we're talking about hypothetical sales far into the future, but that was just a concern that came up to me and it sounds like Revan Tax is comfortable with it.
Yeah, you know, I think in researching this, one thing that it did, did come about is the fact that, you know, the panels themselves, you know, they're expected to last X number of years, so for example, 20 years or so. And so I think I would venture to guess that in other jurisdictions, that was taken into consideration, being that it wasn't actually a part of the property, if you will, you know, like it's, it's, it may get damaged, it may, you know, it can be uninstalled, you know, and so forth. So I would say that, you know, to answer your question, perhaps we just need to take a closer look at it.
Is the, did you know offhand, offhand, the decline in value of the solar panels as they age? Is that a tax deduction to the homeowner?
I have no idea.
I don't either.
I'm sorry.
Okay. All right, thank you, thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. Thank you, Senator Fisher. Senator Taitigui.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good afternoon to you, Revan Tax, Marie, and Carlos from GIDEA. Appreciate you being here today and testifying. I think it's just a very simple bill that makes sure that we are not being taxed for putting solar panels on your house, you know, and, but however, you know, in the reality, when you're selling your home, that is in consideration. And I'm glad you brought up the longevity of solar panels because solar panels do have a life, a short lifespan, if you ask me. 20 years is really not that long because you're losing solar cells every year, so a percentage of that is basically unusable anymore. But I think it's as simple as that. We're just giving a break to those people who want to be more conscious about saving our environment and having more clean energy. And so totally in support of this legislation. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right. Thank you, Senator Taitigui. Senator Barnett.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd just like to thank everyone for coming out to testify and I also would like to commend the bill's author for yet another great sustainability effort. Fully support this measure, Madam Chair. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Senator Barnett. Okay, great questions and just to kind of make it clear that the exemption is for the increase in valuation due to the solar panels, it's not the cost of the solar panels themselves. So just to make that clear. But yeah, we're definitely looking forward to, I guess, how that would be implemented. So maybe we'll have these discussions offline. Okay, thank you, thank you so much for being here. If there are no further testimony on Bill 1-37, Bill 1-37 has been duly heard. And now we will move to the next item on our agenda is to hear testimony on Bill Number 17-37 COR, sponsored by Senator Telo Taitigui and co-sponsored by Senators Joanne Brown, Sabina Flores Perez, Roy Canata, Jesse Lohan. It's an act to add a new Section 77103 to Article 1, Chapter 77, Title 12 Guam Code annotated, relative to ensuring fiscal responsibility by limiting the total authorized amount of tax credits each year to the amount set aside by Ilas Satura in Guahan as a general fund reserve or the deficit reduction rainy day fund. Again, I would like to acknowledge my colleagues that are here today, Senator Tom Fisher, Senator Telo Taitigui and Senator Chris Barnett. I'd like to offer the floor to the sponsor of the bill to provide the opening statement. Senator Taitigui, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good afternoon to everyone once again. Thank you also, Madam Chair, for scheduling, scheduling this public hearing on Bill 17-37 and for the opportunity to offer these brief remarks and comments. Madam Chair, I recognize that tax credits, which is revenue for all intents and purposes, when implemented without jeopardizing the government of Guam budget, can be helpful in securing much-needed public facilities and infrastructure. Tax credits can be helpful, particularly when Guam Legislature is unable to, or unable or fails to appropriate funds for a specific need that members of the private sector are able and willing to cover. With that, Madam Chair, and as a matter of fiscal responsibility, Bill 17 proposes to require that the fiscal year total amount of new tax credits authorized by the government of Guam shall not exceed the amount set aside by the Guam Legislature in the annual budget law as a 2% general fund deficit reduction rainy day fund. For reference, the 2% general fund deficit reduction rainy day fund amount that is recognized in the FY 23 budget bill is approximately $14,556,248. Madam Chair, based on information GIDEA provided the legislature on the different tax credit programs administered by the agency, of the 14 authorizations totaling $29.7 million in tax credit, approximately $17.7 million has been distributed to date, leaving a balance of approximately $11.9 million available in credits. Madam Chair, Bill 17 recognizes that the budget impact of tax credit programs must be reflected in each annual government of Guam budget or the likelihood of a budget deficit is definite. Bill 17 further recognizes that the budget impact of new tax credit programs will also have an impact on the reduction of anticipated revenues for the fiscal year that such programs commence, particularly when such tax benefits are not factored into the Budget Act. Madam Chair, Bill 17-37, we must make sure that each existing tax credit program is factored into each budget and that the future tax credit programs do not exceed the amount reserved in the rainy day fund for situations where excess or surplus revenues may be insufficient to cover the amount of these tax benefit programs. Madam Chair, I look forward to the discussion, including any amendments that may be needed going forward and I look to, I would like to conclude these brief remarks by thanking GIDEA for working with my office on the introduction of Bill 17 and for recommendations the agency offered, which led to the introduction of a complementary measure of Bill 18, which we will hear after this measure. So, Madam Chair, for the opportunity to present my overview on Bill 17.
This is Massey, Senator Taitigui. I'd like to recognize at this time Senator Lohan. Thank you. Okay, just a couple of things. Notices were sent to the Administrator, Melanie Mendiola, but we have representatives here from GIDEA, so thank you. Fiscal note that was received February 16, 2023 states, "Tax credits are accounted for in the General Appropriations Act for each fiscal year, such as the Harmon Industrial Park roadway rehabilitation improvements, $175,000. In FY 2022 and FY 2023, additionally, other tax credits are factored in the legislation submitted in the executive budget request of 2023." Currently, the amount set aside annually by Ilas Satura for the general fund reserve or the deficit reduction rainy day fund in the Budget Act far exceed the amount of tax credits claimed each fiscal year. The Bureau is unable to ascertain a specific cost impact absent additional information from the Guam Economic Development Authority. Okay, so, so if I recall, the, the budget, you know, there was definitely a fluctuation, especially with the pandemic, there was a fluctuation. In fact, we probably zeroed out what was in the rainy day fund from what I recall and it was only recently that we did put in money in there. And so I guess, I guess, Senator Taitigui, would you like to be the first to ask questions at this point?
If I like to.
Okay, okay, great, thanks. Thank you. Okay, so I'd like to then call upon Carlos Bordalio for his testimony.
Thank you, Senator, and members of the committee. Bill 1737 seeks to set an annual ceiling to control the impact to the general fund revenues as tax credit claims are approved. The bill proposes that the ceiling not exceed the amount set aside by Ilas Satura in the annual budget law as the general fund reserve deficit rainy day fund. the annual budget law as the general fund reserve deficit rainy day fund. Although GIDEA sees value in setting an annual ceiling on the amount of tax credits authorized, we are unsure if the deficit reduction rainy day fund is the most appropriate benchmark to use. While we defer to the budgetary experts at the Bureau of Budget and Management Research and the Office of Finance and Budget to further discuss this benchmark, we suggest that it may be more prudent to base the ceiling on evaluating historic trends in business privileged tax collections as above tax credits are authorized against the BPT.
Okay. Thank you. Deputy Director Marie Lozama, if you have any testimony.
Hello again. Actually, for this particular bill, we do not have testimony at this time or we are not prepared to testify at this time. However, we will be providing written testimony at a later date.
All right. Thank you. And I see another gentleman here from GIDEA, Mr. Bazza, right? Siniklis, my apologies.
John Siniklis.
Are you here to provide testimony as well?
No, I'm just here to support Carlos.
Okay. Okay, great. Thank you. All right. So, so I see that you, your suggestion is base it on BPT, Mr. Bordalio. Okay. So if you can just give us, paint us a picture of how that would work.
All right. It could work as a percentage of the BPT and given that most of the credits are applied towards BPT and some towards excise tax, that it would be a direct correlation in setting the ceiling for the taxes that are being affected, primarily the BPT and excise tax, as opposed to the rainy day fund, which is, I think, is 2% of the general fund appropriation, total general fund appropriation.
Okay. And, you know, we come out with so many bills, right, related to tax credits. Do you have a total amount of tax credits that haven't been called on?
Yes, John. Let me have a go.
To date, we have a total of $35,300,000 authorized tax credits.
Did you say $35 million?
Correct. $35,300,000.
$300,000 of tax credits that have not been used?
No, not authorized.
Oh, authorized.
Authorized. Dispersion is $18,466,886.22.
Sorry, what was the $18 million figure for?
Dispersion.
Oh, that's what, what we have floating out there?
That's correct.
Okay.
That we've given in tax credits.
Okay. Wow. Okay, so I see, yeah, the rainy day fund, I notice, doesn't go that high, at least in my, in the recent future, or the recent past, I should say. So I could see why you're suggesting a bigger fund, which is the BPT. The BPT we use for a lot of other appropriations, right?
Right.
Right. And, okay. Would you provide, would you be able to provide that listing to the committee as far as what's authorized and what is floating out there?
Yes.
And what is the timeline for these tax credits to be provided?
There's various timelines depending upon the enactment date and the, whether there was a horizon set within the law. And the information that we provide to you clearly state the timelines and the authorization.
Yeah. Yeah, I do appreciate this bill because, you know, that, you know, this is the first thing that gets taken out of the budget. And I think we definitely need more fiscal responsibility. So I appreciate the sponsor of this bill. I don't have questions at this moment, so I'd like to open it up to my colleagues. First of all, I'd like to recognize Senator Roy Canata. All right, Senator Fisher. Oh, wait, sorry, my apologies. Senator Taitegui.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Carlos, I appreciate the comments that you made as I was working with GIDEA on providing some type of format to follow, you know, in the event, for some reason, like we went through COVID, you know, we saw that our revenues plundered. And, you know, these tax credits were still given out, you know, prior to a mechanism, at least to be able to cover whatever shortfall we have. However, BPT versus the rainy day fund. Now, in the rainy day fund, I mentioned in my testimony, it was about $14,558. Is there a reason why, I mean, is, is BPT higher than the 2% that was suggested from the rainy day? Is the BPT higher annually?
Yes, BPT is, I believe, is around $300 million for FY 2023.
2023, the BPT was $300 million.
$300 million.
$300 million for BPT versus the $14 million. That's quite a bit. $300 million, you know, to be able to have a ceiling like that for tax credits, you know, in the first, first of all, we are having private sector, you know, fund a project that we can't even afford in the first place. So I think that we, we need to be more conscious of how we spend our money and keep tabs on it. You know, $300 million pays for a lot of other stuff in the government of Guam and to allow that type of increase. But do you feel that the $14 million is really substantially low, that, you know, with the intention of increasing it? I mean, that's almost like open checkbook.
Let me clarify on the, on the BPT. Was it to set the ceiling at the BPT level that's in the law now, but perhaps a percentage of the BPT?
A percentage of the BPT. And was that suggested percentage? What is the ultimate amount? I mean, based on historical data that you've had and going through, I mean, tax credits in the past that you've been dealing with?
Right.
And the $17 million that you quoted earlier to the, to our chair, if I'm not mistaken, actually, there's only $11.9 million that's available in tax credits during my research with GIDEA and going through this. But have you at GIDEA discussed that particular amount?
Senator, we went back to the tax credit program and we found that the most that we've drawn or dispersed in any one year?
One year, yeah.
Yeah, correct. It was in 2017, and that was $3 million. So
Right. Yeah.
The $14 million should be
Covers it.
Right.
Pretty much covers it.
It's just a recommendation that because it's BPT that you're primarily giving the tax credit from, that perhaps you could use that as a basis to set your ceiling. But in no way, shape, or form did we imply that we wanted to make that the ceiling, the
Higher.
Right. No, the $300 million that's currently authorized.
Right, right. Which is, okay, which would give you that, you know. But of course, you didn't come up with a percentage on the BPT either. So I think the, the 2% for the rainy day fund is, is that cushion, I think, that we need. And like you mentioned, in one given year, the highest you was, set out was $3 million.
$3 million.
In tax credit. Because many of these programs are, even though the project gave $1 million, they're only availing themselves for the next three years of only $200,000 every year, things like that. So, you know, it's broken down. And so I appreciate your testimony. And I think, I think this is doable. The 14 is enough. I mean, that's what I've heard from also GIDEA, is working with them, that it's sufficient to meet your needs as well as the needs of our community too, on tax credits that are given when the government of Guam cannot pay for the project. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right. This is Masi, Senator Taitegui. Senator Fisher.
Thank you very much. I guess this would probably go to Ms. Lozama. Just 101 here. What is a tax credit?
The tax credit with, with regard to
Just in general?
In general, it could mean several things. And we need to be careful with how it's defined. It could be, could be an abatement, it could be a rebate, it could be, you know. There are certain things that, you know, we wouldn't be able to, to do. So for example, you know, we handle, or we, with regard to income tax, right, we can't, we have to follow whatever it is that the IRS does.
Okay. Well, hypothetically, just hypothetically, I make $100 a year and my income tax after, I don't know, various credits, so not credits, offsets, whatever, my net taxable income is $50. If I had a $50 tax credit from Rev and Tax, does that mean I have no income tax liability? Well, no, that's, no, I have the liability, but Rev and Tax will not collect it?
Usually what happens with the credits is it's rolled over into the next tax year. So whatever you
Is that because it's impossible to forecast the amount that would be taxed in any given year?
Yes, because sometimes what happens is even though you file a return, you know, you're assume, you know, you'd be assuming that it's error free. But if they are auditing that and something comes up, you know, in the audit, if it, if it happens to be pulled for an audit, then it'll likely change, you know, the amount.
Okay. For accounting purposes, does it really matter that we cap tax credits? I mean, $14 million, $300 million, that would be in the BPT collection, $300 billion, that, whatever. Does it really matter from accounting?
I couldn't, I couldn't answer that. But, but based on GIDEA's testimony, I mean, I think it, we don't run into that danger of kind of going up that high.
Let me ask that to Mr. Bordalio. Does it, does it matter from accounting, from an accounting standpoint, whether or not you cap the amount of tax credits available?
From an accounting standpoint, I don't, I don't think it really affects financial statements insofar, if you're talking about affecting the financial statements, because if the tax credit is, is taken and offset, it will just reflect in the reduction in the collection of a, whatever the tax credit was applied to, BPT, be it BPT or excise.
So it sounds like it would matter because a tax credit that we capped at $307,856, we would be able to then offer tax credits up to that amount and that would reflect, I guess, on the left side of the ledger as far as, or the right side of the ledger, as far as collections go?
I'm not quite understanding, but
Yeah, that was a very poorly phrased question. I apologize. If we allow tax credits up to $300 million, how does that reflect on our books? Just
That's correct. So again, if the entity, whatever, the contractor avails themselves the tax credit, that will be offset against, for example, BPT, if it's taken against BPT.
Okay.
BPT will be, reflect a reduction by the amount of that tax credit.
So our bottom line?
It would be reflected in the amount collected for BPT.
Okay, so by, by capping the amount of credits available, we are essentially putting part of anticipated revenue into the general fund in a lockbox? We can't, you can't, you got $15 million and you're not going above that, correct?
By capping it, I'm
No, I'm saying we're kind of limiting the amount of hit
Limiting
The revenue that the general fund could take.
Yeah.
Okay.
So what would happen is we just have to be cognizant of the law and that, that limit that's set every year.
Okay.
And ensure that we don't exceed it. But insofar as reflecting it in the, in accounting and in statements, that would be reflected in the, the corresponding collection of BPT.
Okay. Just, just a couple more questions. And when I first read this bill, you can probably clear this up in a minute or less, I saw tax credits capped. And then I immediately thought of the qualifying certificate program. And I thought, well, these QC's are contracts between recipient beneficiary and the government of Guam. If we were to, I don't know that this bill retroactively will place a cap, but I worry about your ability to provide qualifying certificates and whether or not you think this bill might impact that.
I don't see anything in the bill that would impact the qualifying certificate.
A tax credit, but qualifying certificates frequently offer tax credits. How could this bill not affect that?
Qualifying certificates, tax incentives and abatements, abatements of taxes.
But they also offer tax credits. For example, there is a, a certain institution that's asking for a 75% tax credit on taxes derived for their corporation as well as personnel that owns stock.
I have my business development manager, Mr. Ed Camacho. I'll ask him to address that question.
Good afternoon, Senators. The qualifying certificate
Sorry, sir, if you can state your name for record-keeping purposes. Thank you.
My name is Ed Camacho, Business Development Manager for Guam Economic Development Authority. I also oversee the qualifying certificate program.
Okay.
So there are various different taxes that the QC offers. One of them is up to 75% of the income. So basically, what would happen was if, it's an incentive to provide investment in the Guam. So if they come in, that tax is not already being paid into Guam. So if a new business comes in, they can now avail of this benefit incentive, up to 75% depending on the, the business and the industry. So basically, what the business would end up doing is paying that 75% first. Whatever that taxable liability is, they would pay it. And then there would no, the practice is now not to rebate it. It's on account. So the following year, if there's a tax liability, the beneficiary can avail of a credit they have with the, with the government of Guam. So they're really paying it and they get, but this has nothing to do with the credits that already assigned on the BB, any of the tax programs we have right now with the BPT.
Okay. So just to, just to clarify, if, you know, Tom Fisher Incorporated received a QC for 75%, 10 years off my corporate income taxes and, you know, an abatement of whatever, you do not believe that we would be put in breach, the government, if we pass this law? Breach of contract?
No, I don't believe we'll be in breach of it.
Okay.
Those taxes are not realized right now. And going back to possibly placing a ceiling on this.
Okay. Now, you just said taxes are not realized. That's a term of art. Could you explain what you mean by realized?
Well, it's a brand new business. It's a brand new business. We're not giving tax incentives to an existing business right now. It's a brand new business whose revenue or its taxes are not forecast already into the government of Guam.
Okay.
So they're not included to any budgets right now because the business doesn't exist or they're not receiving any benefits at the time.
Okay. Going forward, do you anticipate a drastic drop in the amount of qualifying certificates that would be awarded? Because if, assuming this bill passed?
No, I don't. Currently, we only have 10 QC's on the books.
Okay.
There's four or five or six, maybe six, that are, we're going through the process right now.
Okay.
So what, what we used to have, you know, in the dozens, now we only have 10 on the books right now. And our board recently approved to revoke one of them. So that leaves us to nine. So there's not a lot of interest in QC. There is, but it's, it's a stringent process. In order to get a QC, there's a lot they have to provide to the government of Guam. And currently, we have, I think, eight that are already, that are active right now. One of them's being revoked, the other one's just a trust. Not all of them have a BPT benefit. Very few have BPT benefits. But all of them do have an income tax benefit.
Right, yeah.
But the QC is designed to provide the incentive to attract the investment in the Guam. And will this impact, will this the Guam and will this impact, will this violate, this tax credit violate? I, I don't think it will. If it's pegged to the BBT, then it has nothing to do with the income.
Okay, but as it's written now, I'm, I'll turn it over to my colleagues here, but I guess I'm just trying to satisfy myself that GovGuam won't be forced into breach of contract because of this and, well, I guess going forward, the cap under this, under this bill, even on tax credits, tax credits as well as QC's, there would be a cap of, it's either they're going to be the BPT or it's going to be the rainy day fund, one of the two, right? Okay. All right, well, thank you very much, lady and gentleman. Thank you, thank you, Madam.
All right, thank you, Senator Fisher. Senator Barnett, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just again, we'd like to thank the people for coming out to testify and also the bill's author and the cosponsors and I just pray that this measure and its companion measure kind of open our eyes a little bit to maybe the excessiveness with which we grant these tax credits and QC's. You know, as I'm sure you're aware, we're, we've been tasked with coming up with tens of millions of dollars for the working people of the government of Guam and so I just hope that these measures do kind of force us to take a second look with how generous we are in granting a lot of these tax credits. With that being said, thank you, Madam Chair. I ask to be excused, I have a meeting to attend upstairs.
Thank you. This is Massey, Senator Barnett, for being here. At this time, I'd like to recognize Senators Joanne Brown and Senator Joanne, oh, I'm sorry, Senator Jocelyn Augustine for being here. Thank you. Okay, all right, so I'd like to recognize Senator Luhon, if he has any questions for the panel.
Yes, thank you, thank you. Mr. Camacho, if I understand correctly, of course, the QC program basically is an incentive for new companies coming in, so it's not an existing company that's already here and, and had already some tax liabilities and therefore now asking to, to, again, be a new industry that has previously, has been contributing. So basically, a new industry coming in here who've had, who've had no tax liabilities in the very beginning but are contributing through maybe the employees' contributions and all that. So maybe the, the question should be asked is, are these tax, are these tax credits that companies may receive, are these tax credits transferable and sellable?
A QC is transferable, but keep, keep in mind, the tax credits that we're talking about are tax, taxes that are paid in to Governor, Governor Guam already.
Sure, sure.
And those tax are accounted for in every year's budget.
Sure.
So to provide a tax credit would be taken from something that's already being paid.
Yes, yes.
The QC, on the other hand, they're future, so when they start, and not, I mean, when you take a look at a QC that has a 75% rebate, they're paying 25%.
Sure.
And most of these QC's also pay BBT. Only a small few of them have a BBT abatement.
Sure.
So, the question, the question is, will there be an impact? Sure, there'll be an impact on some of the QC's that do pay, the, pay into the government of Guam, but the tax credit program is for, for taxes assessed against what the government is already receiving.
Sure, sure, sure.
They're already, so it's not built into the budget, so these QC's that come in may or may not be added to the, to the, to the budget.
To the budget, yeah. But, but when talking about the, the tax credit, there's already, it's already built into the, to the, to the budget cycle. So if a company, say Company A, I don't need, you know, I've got an excess of, of tax credits and, but Company B may need more tax credits, so I can, Company A that's got more than enough tax credits, I can, I can transfer that over to another company or I can, I can sell it for 75 cents on the dollar, can't I?
The QC recipient, the owner of the company who receives the QC, the company could be sold and the benefits will be transferable to the new company if it's approved by the Board of Directors and signed off by the governor. That's the only way it can be transferred. There is a difference between a QC and a tax credit program.
Tax, yeah.
There's a significant difference. I think we might be muddying up the water by talking about QC incentives and the tax credit program.
Tax credit, yeah.
There is a significant difference.
No, no, but I'm talking about the tax credit program.
Okay, Senator, to the extent that the law allows for the transfer of the tax credit, that's, that's the only mechanism for allowing a transfer of tax credits. It would have to be written into the law.
And, and it's sellable as well, right? So transferable, sellable? No? It was in the law?
It adds to follow the, what's set in the law in terms of allowing for transfers, whether it's sellable or not.
Yeah. If I'm not mistaken, you had said that the largest tax credit claim was back in 2017, at 3 million?
Correct. 2017.
2017.
3 million.
So, on, on an annual basis, what do you, what is being, what is being redeemed?
On an average track?
Well... Hmm? Yeah, yeah, yeah.
About $800,000 on average.
Oh, okay. 800,000 average?
Right.
Okay, and you said we had, we have an outstanding of how much?
We dispersed 18.4 and we have a balance of about 16.8.
Okay, so annually, you're seeing a redemption of under, under a million dollars?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you, Senator, Senator Joanne Brown.
Thanks very much, Madam Chair. I'm kind of confused because I really thought in co-sponsoring this particular bill before us, we were specifically talking about tax credits that were being given to a lot of our sports organizations and others out there that were intending to, you know, be able to use those funds for their, building their fields and things of that nature. And this came to light more evidently last term because, you know, it's, it's easy to pass legislation to fund things and give credit for everything under the sun and not deal with the real realities of the financial limitations of our government revenue. And so if I want to be a popular senator and I want to, you know, finally get the Gania Pool maybe up, maybe I want my organization and I'll sponsor a bill and I'm going to give them a $3 million tax credit to refurbish the, you know, I'm just giving you this example, the Gania Pool. And I'm not having to deal with the realities of taking $3 million out of general fund revenue, which is really what is happening. We are diverting revenue that otherwise would go to what we argue are critical needs, be it, you know, our school system, our hospital, definitely these days, our law enforcement. And so we felt very much in co-sponsoring, certainly I did in co-sponsoring this with Senator Telo, that there was a need to put limits on that because otherwise the sky is the limit unless someone wants to actively come in here and change a law, if this passes into law, then, then, you know, make them take that extra step. Because I think we need to be responsible in how we, how we appropriate the people's money and where it goes to. And I think we need to be also transparent and sometimes this is like a little guise, even though these are, are projects we could be supportive of, because who's going to argue? I would love to have a new sports facility, certainly want to see the Gania Pool that I used to, you know, go regularly to be back in operation and as many do in this community. But we're also finding that, you know, these tax credits are given out, we don't know, I mean, certainly, Gita, your, your, head of your agency did relay how Gita's supposedly tracking, but some of these things have been dormant for a number of years. From the times they were given the tax credit, we don't know if any follow-up has happened, were the projects that were intended for the tax credit ever completed? Is there accountability to that? Are the organizations still in existence? I mean, the list of questions can go on, so this kind of gets a little, you know, a little less clear to see. And I think, again, it, it comes down to just simply being responsible in how we appropriate the people's money. I mean, if we want to divert it for something like this, then maybe we just need to put it on the floor of the legislature and, and see if it'll get through. But definitely, we feel there's a need to limit it because otherwise the sky, otherwise is the limit and every one of us, any one of us at any given day can introduce legislation like that, advertise it, whereas some of us are very good at press releases. We just get it out there and look at all the great things we're doing for Guam, but then we hear about the problems in our school system and our physical infrastructure that's not being addressed and the needs of the Guam Police Department. I had a constituent that had called my office complaining that when the Guam police blocked the highway, for whatever reason, might be a crash investigation, might have been a fatality, you know, you're three miles back and, and the traffic is at a standstill and you don't know why. And I'd asked the police chief after a roundtable we had on Friday, you know, why is there no notice? Because I have a constituent that raised this concern. We don't have the, the towers anymore. They used to have those electronic towers that would tell people, you know, roads close or whatever, whatever it is, just, just to keep people informed because they might not hear it on the radio or whatever. So, you know, little things like that that are needed, critical infrastructure that's beneficial to the community, we're not funding those things, they're not there, but we can give millions in tax credits that are not accounted for to the same degree. So I just want to relay that's what I'm focused on and this is totally separate from, you know, the QC, specific QC's that, that I know definitely we can discuss that on another day, the kind of things we're giving QC's out for these days and is there a need for that in those particular industries? And I'm certainly open to that discussion. But that's, that was really the intent to my understanding as to why this particular bill came into being and why I co-sponsored it. So I don't have any questions, Madam Chair, but just wanted to provide that clarification. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Senator Brown. Yeah, this is for new tax credits, so basically, just to reiterate, the bill impacts authorizations for new tax credits, not what was done in the past. Okay. All right, now I'd like to recognize Senator Roy Canata.
Just wanted to thank you guys for your testimony today, really appreciate it. No comments, ma'am, at this time. That's it.
All right, thank you, Senator Canata. Senator Sinagastine.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Simple question. I noticed on the fiscal note identifiers that use the example of the Harm Industrial Park. Tax credit, what is, tax credit is, is when a company wants to spend money but wants a credit because the government cannot afford to do it. Harm Industrial Park was a very good example. The businesses all joined together and said, if we can get a tax credit, we'll fix the roads. And what did that cause? The industry in Harm Industrial Park? I think it was a boom. It's a boom to the economy. It wasn't against the economy, it wasn't in, I don't know, maybe one of you can define it. If you give a tax credit, it's money you never got to begin with. You'll never get it. The businesses are not going to pay for anything unless they got, they get something out of it. If I'm in a business, I'm not going to spend money for the government unless I know I get something in return. The government wants me to do them a favor, give me a credit and I'll do you a favor. It's kind of like an even trade. But the business still, the business, for example, if it's Camacho Industry, Camacho Industry gets a tax credit, not the employees, am I correct? Not the employees, not the vendors that you associate with, it's only the business. But all the money movement, still getting taxed. Sure, the business will get a break, but nobody else does. Unless one of you can explain, if it's any different, I, I'm looking at Maria and she knows where I'm coming from, because I used to work at Revenue Tax, do this for a living, taxes. Unless somebody else can, and Gita can explain anything different. Because I see that putting a restriction on tax credit, for what? What are you restricting from? There's nothing to restrict. The law or the bill that's created that gives the tax credit, we did this, I think, on the last term, there was one bill on one, I think it was the softball or baseball, they ended up not getting anything. We can control it in the legislature when the bill comes out. You don't have to micromanage it upfront. I mean, that's just my opinion. You don't need to set the pace and say, no more than 20 million, no more than 300. Why? If somebody was to come here or somebody in business today says, I'm willing to spend to fix the pool, all the pools, all the parks and rec pool, all I need is a tax credit for the next five years. Because it's going to cost 30, 40 million dollars. And when you count, when you do the numbers and Revenue Tax is now, and does the numbers on the tax credit, it probably will never reach that amount to begin with what they're spending because there's going to be a bunch of businesses involved to help fix the pool. Lot of contributors and nobody else is going to get it but the, the main company. Unless we allow it in law, the states that you can sell it, you can transferable, then that's, then you cause a problem there. Then it becomes runaway because it'll be parked in some, I'll give you 10%, everybody get 10%. Next, you know, you don't even know, you can't even calculate what is the true impact. Unless someone can explain that to me, I, I can't support putting a restriction. And I'm, I'm well aware of how the QC works. It's only for new business anyway. And that's when you get caught in the transferable and sellable, then that's, that's part of the QC program anyway. But for tax credit, how you write it in law is how it determines it. Unless any one of you would like to comment to what I mean, otherwise I have nothing else to say. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any comments from the panel regarding that? Okay. All right, thank you, Senator, thank you, Senator Sinagastine. I'd like to open the floor to the sponsor of the bill for any closing remarks.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for the opportunity. You know, why are we here doing something like this? Well, number one, Gita brought this to our attention several times during public hearings when it had to deal with tax credits. So we thought putting some kind of fiscal responsibility as to why we were doing this to provide just that, fiscal responsibility and know exactly how much is not coming into the general fund because we gave out tax credits. Tax credits that are sometimes given out to nonprofit organizations or organizations who never even asked for it because senators just wanted to have, put a brownie or a feather in their hat for that one individual nonprofit organization. It's time that this government becomes more fiscally responsible and find exactly how much money has been set aside for these tax credits and to realize that we have to have a limit to that. Everything else is going to fail in this government that's not going to be able to, we can't be able to, to pay for. Schools that are coming up are one issue, our roads, our infrastructures. Why would businesses want to come today to give a tax credit for a project? They'll pay for it, they said. They owe taxes, they'll pay for it. Usually, they do this because it's going to benefit them in some way. Example, the Harmon Drag Strip is a classic. They gave tax credits for the Harmon Drag Strip because they know their businesses, those individuals, would benefit from it. Very simple. We can't, we are in an artificial economy. We have been for the last three years, have been in an artificial economy. And we need to get our act together to ensure that we have funds to pay for tomorrow. And this is one way to do that. I want to thank my cosponsors, Senator Brown, Senator Perez, Senator Canata, and Senator Luhon for having the foresight of understanding what is fiscally responsibility is to being fiscally responsible. I appreciate that. And I hope my other colleagues realize the same thing as well. Definitely going to be lobbying for this and know, Gita, you have been a, a big part of this legislation and Bill 18 as well. So I thank you, Madam Chair, for the opportunity to close and provide some more of an insight why this bill has been introduced in the first place. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Tadequie. Seeing that there are no further testimonies on Bill 17-37COR, this bill has been duly heard. Now to the next item on our agenda, Bill 18-37COR, sponsored by Senator Telo Tadequie, co-sponsored by Senators Joanne Brown, Sabina Flores Perez, Roy Canata, Jesse Luhon, is an act to add a new Section 77103 to Article 1, Chapter 77, Title 12, Guam Code Annotated, relative to providing for the responsible management of public finances by implementing a 10-year sunset provision for all tax credit programs. I'd like to acknowledge my colleagues that are here today, Senator Tom Fisher, Senator Telo Tadequie, Senator Joanne Brown, Senator Roy Canata, Senator Jesse Luhon, and Senator Jocelyn Augustine. Thank you, colleagues. At this time, I'd like to recognize a sponsor of the bill to provide an opening statement.
Thank you, Madam, thank you, Madam Chair, for the opportunity and thank you for scheduling the public hearing for Bill 18 and for the opportunity to offer these brief comments on the bill. on the bill. Madam Chairman, at the request of Gita, Bill 18 was introduced and proposes that notwithstanding any other provisions, tax credit programs shall automatically expire 10 years following enactment of the prospective enabling legislation. The bill provides that its provisions shall not apply to tax credit programs where the, where Guam Legislature established a specific period for claiming credits. Again, the bill provides that its provisions shall not apply to tax credit programs where the Guam Legislature established a specific period for claiming credits. Madam Chair, Bill 18 further provides that the legislature may, in its discretion, extend through enactment legislation the enabled, enabled period for any tax credit program until such time that all enabled tax credits authorized for the program are exhausted. Madam Chair, according to Gita, since 1998, 14 tax credit programs have been authorized by the Guam Legislature with a total cap of approximately 29.7 million. Of that amount, approximately 17.7 million have been distributed, leaving a balance of approximately 11.9 million which may be accessed by eligible business, businesses pursuant to law and rules and regulations established by Gita. Madam Chair, although some tax credit laws allow unused tax credits to be carried into subsequent years until fully exhausted, Gita has reported last year that eight of the 14 tax credit programs were inactive. The eight programs represent approximately $9.6 million of the total tax credit that remain available. Of the eight inactive tax credit programs, four have not been implemented, accounting for 8 million in potential tax revenues which public safety, health, education, and other services and programs demand on, I mean, depend on. Madam Chair, as stated in the bill, the Guam Legislature intends to avoid unnecessarily extending the time in which tax credit programs may be implemented. For reference, according to Gita, the tax credit program authorized since 1998 from the Guam Raceway Park has a balance of $605,348.82. Tax credits authorized since 2003 for the Paseo Baseball Stadium has a balance of $498,744. And the 2004 tax credit program for soccer stadium facilities has a balance of $200,008. Madam Chair, Bill 18 implements a 10-year sunset provision for existing and new tax credit programs as part of our broader effort as policymakers to provide for prudent budgeting through the responsible management of tax credit programs and through potential impacts on the government of Guam budget. Madam Chair, I look forward to the discussion, including any amendments that may be needed going forward to make this a better bill. And I would like to conclude these brief remarks and by thanking Gita for working with my office on the introduction of Bill 18. Si tu es ma si, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Tadegui. So fiscal note was received February 7th, 2023. It states, um, that placing a sunset provision of 10 years for all existing tax credit programs other than those where Eless La Torre establishes a specific period for claiming credits will generate a positive impact on the government of Guam finances as it will assist in the responsible management of these programs and not implicate revenue collections in subsequent fiscal years. However, the Bureau notes that applying any tax credits will likely result in reduced financial resources for other government programs and services in the fiscal periods that credits are claimed. Further, the Bureau is unable to ascertain a specific cost impact absent additional information from Gita. Okay. So now I'd like to call upon those that have signed up to testify. Carlos Bordalio, thank you again.
Thank you. Um, Bill 1837 seeks to impose a sunset provision of 10 years on all tax credit laws unless Eless Tura has established a specific, specific, specific period of time. Gita supports this measure as initially tax credit laws were not specific as to the periods of time credits of the time credits were made to be available. However, more recent tax credit laws have had specific sunset dates imposed along with a specific amount of credits that are authorized each year for the program. Bill 18 will provide consistency among all tax credit programs by imposing a universal sunset provision, if not already contained in law. Furthermore, the Guam Office of Public Accountability through OPA Audit 715 recommended the governor and the legislature repeal unimplemented tax credit programs. While Bill 18 does not enact an outright repeal of these programs, it will ensure that inactive programs will eventually sunset.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Bordalio. Deputy Director Lozama.
Good afternoon, um, again, senators. Um, as with Bill 17-37, we do not have testimony this time, but we'll be prepared to submit written testimony at a later date.
Thank you for being here. Uh, is there anyone else that would like to provide testimony? Okay. So then we'll move with the questions. I'd like to offer the sponsor, if she would like to provide questions first.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I think it's, it's, it's just shooting straightforward. You know, uh, we're trying to get our books in order. Uh, we did the same thing. Um, that was actually supported by the Oversight Chair of Appropriation when it came to, um, accounts that were dormant and, and sitting there for forever. Uh, that we, I think it was like 28 accounts that the OPA recognized as sitting dormant and should be closed. We should have that same perspective here. It allows for, um, other programs to move forward and that's why this is, goes hand in hand with the, uh, the first bill that I introduced, Bill 17. Um, it allows for other tax opportunities for businesses to avail themselves of tax credits for programs on Guam to, to move forward. But, you know, providing that cap first and foremost, so that we know what, what we're dealing with on an annual basis to ensure that we don't go over a certain amount is, I think it's prudent and it's fiscal responsibility. Um, and again, especially in this, um, economy that's been, actually, what is it? The economy is, uh, I had, artificial?
Artificial.
That's it. That's the word. I was looking, sorry, I've been sitting here for like, now going on seven hours, six hours in the same place all day today. So excuse me, getting a bit tired. But moving forward, I look forward, um, to any comments that you have other than the testimony. Carlos, is there anything that, other than what you provided? Um, this is something that, uh, you know, and, and in the past, I know that Gita has tried to reach out to other senators to move forward on something like this. And I hope that, uh, we're, we're doing just that for you. So is there anything else?
Um, no further comment. We support, we support the bill.
Support the bill. Thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
And thank you, Senator Tadegui. So, um, earlier on a previous bill, you mentioned there's 35 million authorized, I believe, tax credits. Are there, can you pinpoint, are there programs that are just not being implemented that make up that 35 million? Or how much of that 35 million is made up with inactive tax credit programs?
I have with me my, um, Assistant Manager of Compliance, Mr. John San Nicholas. Gila? John?
There's at least $3 million in there that's just sitting inactive. It's not being implemented and probably won't get off the ground for various reasons. There's about $3 million sitting in there, approximately $3 million sitting in there. And those are not active. They're, and they probably won't, uh, they won't be worked on anytime soon for various reasons.
Which program is that?
Oh, like, well, for, well, uh, the three, I'm talking about three older ones. There's one rather new one for like $5 million for GMH. That is probably not going to get off the ground because one of the stipulations in that credit is that there's a 1% uh, participation fee to be paid by the contributor to Gita. And that's not recoverable in the tax credit. So companies are not going to make a contribution and make an additional, uh, pay an additional fee and not get that back. So that's going to be the biggest reason why that 5 million's not going to get off the ground.
So you said, uh, sorry, that's purely odd. So 5 million, uh, roughly of that 30, 35 million you said earlier, it's not going to be probably utilized?
I'm sorry, it's 3 million launched in the older dormant ones and, and the more recent ones is 5 million. So there's about eight now.
Okay.
Total.
Okay. All right. So yeah, if you could provide that information, we appreciate it to the committee. Um, so 10, 10-year sunset. Uh, I know there's other timeframes potentially. Uh, so why, if you can explain the 10 years, uh, why is that the ideal number?
Well, some, the first tax credit that was enacted back in 1998, and that has been inactive since, you know, like around 2015. And later on, 2003, 2004, and they're not being used. And because these did not have specific times, they were written until they're exhausted. So it leaves it open-ended. So there's no time and there's no expiration to tax credits. So it'll stay on the books until they're exhausted. And if they're not being used, they'll continue to stay there. So this is the, one of the goals is to just take, clean these off as recommended by the OPA in one prior audit.
All right. Thank you for the, the responses. Yeah, I'm, I'm a supporter of this bill. I think that, you know, we have to provide more fiscal restraints when it comes to giving out tax credits and especially if there, there's no expiration date. So, and you know, the finances change, um, over, you know, 10 years and maybe even shorter than that. So we want to be able to afford, um, you know, the programs, right? So I think it, it's a common sense practice to have these expiration dates. And especially if the earlier ones weren't given that. So yes, I'm a, uh, definitely a supporter. All right. Thank you. Uh, I'd like to open the floor to my colleagues. Senator Tom Fisher, if he has any questions.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. First thing I would like to note is these two bills, 1737 and 1837 are bipartisan, uh, in nature. The sponsors are Senator Tadegui, Senator Brown, Senator Perez, Senator Canata, and Senator Luhon. Uh, so this bill, both these bills, all these bills represent concerns that go right across the aisle. And I think it's important to note that, um, the collegiality and the, uh, the fact that you folks have, uh, you know, taken the lead on financial responsibility. Um, so thank you very much for that. Um, one of the things that, uh, Mr. San Nicholas just said that struck me, uh, there are unused tax credits in the qualifying certificate program. And this, is that correct? No?
In the tax credit programs that's authorized by the legislature, separate from the QC program.
I'm sorry.
These are tax credit programs as authorized by the legislature, solely separate from the QC tax credits.
Okay. Um, what is, um, is, is the tax credit, credit that was issued by the legislature, however that machine operated, um, is there a contractual obligation by the government of Guam to, um, provide the tax credits?
Well, basically it stated earlier, the tax credit programs are for, for most of them, if not all of them, are for programs and projects that were not being, uh, being addressed by the Governor Guam.
Okay.
Due to financial constraints. But private entities will come in and make, uh, these, uh, improvements and rehabilitation in different areas.
Yeah.
And they would in turn get the tax credits for making those contributions.
My, my concern is, just like it was in the previous questions, is if there's a contractual relationship, like in a qualifying certificate, uh, between the government of Guam and a recipient, in this case, not a beneficiary, but a recipient, um, despite the fact that they have not used all or a part of it, uh, they would have a very good argument that the legislature's just impaired a contract. Um, uh, do you know whether or not your, maybe I'm wrong, but do you know whether or not your counsel at Gita has had an opportunity to review this, uh, bill for constitutional problems?
Senator, the only contract, uh, that would exist is provided in the law. So the law allows for the tax credit and then a contractor or contributor to a project will come into Gita with their, their, their documents and there's a checklist. And once they've complied with that, then they can avail themselves to the tax credit. So that's how that works.
Okay. I under, I, I understand that, uh, I understand what you said, sir.
Okay.
Um, but my concern is whether or not the recipient, uh, from their point of view, believes that they have a privilege or a right under the contract, under a contract. I understand that we may not agree there is a contract in existence, but my concern is whether or not they believe there is upon which they rely and then we take it away from them and whether or not we're opening ourselves for any sort of liability. I'm not sure that we are. I just hope that, uh, we keep that in mind, um, you know, businesses. Uh, addressing Bill number 18, um, on page two, uh, beginning at line 18, it says, through this act, Eli Hesla Tura proposes to implement a 10-year sunset provision. And then this is the phrase that worries me. It says, or the clause rather, it says, for existing and new tax credit programs. And it's, uh, the word existing is what, is what bothers me here. Uh, and I'm just going to reflect back on the conversation we had 30 minutes ago. Um, I would suggest to, um, the sponsors of the bill that perhaps we put in a definitional section, uh, so that we all understand that tax credit programs here do not include, uh, those awarded under qualifying certificates because those are existing. And somebody could read this and say, whoops, the tax credit, uh, the QC has just been sunsetted. So, I mean, we could easily fix that by just defining what we mean. Um, and then if we drop down to 77103 proposed, same page, beginning at line 26, it says, um, at 27, uh, tax credit program shall automatically expire 10 years following inactive enactment of their enabling legislation. That's another problem I have because the qualifying certificate program was enabled years ago. So an attorney could read this to say that the entire tax credit program has just been tanked because it says, uh, since enabling legislation. Again, this is a, I think that this is a, uh, no more than a drafting issue that can easily be taken care of by defining our terms. So I'm just, I'm not bringing that out to criticize. I'm just.
Just a, just a point of information, um, for my colleague, that this is a tax credit. This has nothing, and I know Carlos was just about to say the same thing I'm saying, has nothing to do with QC's at all. So it's exempt, completely exempt from, that's a whole different animal by itself. Okay.
And I, I very much appreciate that. And that is why I began my comments by saying we should add a definitional, uh, section because the qualifying certificate program specifically refers to tax credits. So if it says all programs, then somebody could read that to mean as well as the QC's. And, um, I, I totally understand that you do not mean to touch QC's here. Uh, but I would just say, you know, let's throw in a definition. You know, notwithstanding any other provisional law, tax credits here do not include anything under the qualifying certificate program or so forth and so on. I think we could do that. But, uh, I, I have to say, thanks again for the fiscal responsibility. I appreciate it. Okay. And thank you, Madam Chair.
All right. Thank you, Senator Fisher. Senator Brown.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I also co-sponsored, uh, this bill again to keep in line with a previous bill that we had, uh, heard this afternoon. And again, it's just keeping some accountability in the process, certainly once these tax credits are given out. And again, this is money that otherwise would still have to be paid, that otherwise would have gone into the general fund for appropriation. Um, it, it just simply gives a timeline because we were finding and reviewing the previous tax credits that were issued, especially the dormant ones that have been dormant for quite some time. There's just no accountability of when the desired and intended project was ever put in place, completed, brought to a conclusion. Uh, and then, you know, also just also a timeline on the tax credit. So it's not there forever. And then we never know if these projects are prioritized or they're ever. And then we never know if these projects are prioritized or they're ever put in place. I mean, at the time that they're given, I'm sure there was a desired intention, as we are ultimately dealing what would be public resources. We should ensure the projects are completed in a timely fashion and accounted for, no different than $10 million going to a tax credit, no different than $10 million coming into the public coffers to be appropriated on behalf of our people. So again, I co-sponsored this legislation with all of you, Senator Tellow, Senator Sabina, Senator Roy, and Senator Luhon, so that we can ensure the transparency and accountability with regards to public funds. Thank you. I don't have any questions. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Brown. Senator Luhon?
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. What are some of the reasons for the inactivity, or, yeah, of the, yeah, tax credits not being available?
I guess that will be a question for the entity, or the organization that's receiving the tax credit, for example, like UOG. I don't know, John has any background on why they have availed themselves of million-dollar tax credit, but this was enacted back in December of '04, and that million dollars still remains. But I don't, I don't know. Do you have any background on that, John?
Our understanding was that was, it is, was written for the UOG Outdoor Multipurpose Sports Complex, and that $1 million was supposedly for the A&E design. So we have not received any information if that was even done. Otherwise, they would have claimed the tax credits for the payment of the A&E design.
Yeah, I think I was co-sponsor for that bill years ago, with, along with, actually, now the governor of Guam. I think that was back, back then, yeah. So anyway, the, the other thing, you know, and I, I understand the line of question that Senator Fisher was talking, was talking about in regards to a possibility of, of opening ourselves up to a lawsuit. I mean, I, I equate this to like promissory notes or GovGuam certificates that, that are owed to people. And I know this from the Lola Cola situation, where some people still have certificates that probably have still not been availed, because those certificates, maybe the recipients are deceased at this point, but they're still good. They're still good, they still can be, be availed. I don't know, I mean, you know, whether it's in probate and all that. But it is, it is an owing from the government of Guam. So again, I'm, as a co-sponsor, but I do understand, again, the line of question that Senator Fisher has, that in, in regards to this, that it's, it's an owing and, and to, to put a, and I understand, and I understand the, again, not availing of it, but would it open us up to, again, losses based on, on an owing of, of a government of Guam?
If I'm thinking along the same lines of what you're thinking, there's an entity that has a tax credit.
Sure.
They submitted their documents.
Sure.
To GITA, to.
Yeah.
To avail themselves of the tax credit.
Yeah.
Once they met all the requirements, they have a bona fide claim on that tax credit. And you're saying that should the law sunset at that time, if they've already met the requirements for the tax credit, they can take that, even if the law has expired, because they were given that tax credit within the timeframe allowed by law? So is that what?
Yeah, 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 absolutely, somewhat like that, Tom, and I think that, and that was your line, right, around that? Yeah, so, yeah.
So once they have the bona fide tax credit.
Sure.
That they qualify for, they can take that now and, and turn that.
Yeah, yeah, and I'm just wondering, again, I mean, I understand the sunset, and I'm all for that. But I'm, I'm just wondering if, if the law could be construed as, as such, that is, it was a GovGuam owing, and therefore, you know, I mean, after, after a 10-year sunset, that GovGuam no longer owes this? I mean, because that, that could be, again, I guess, pushed over to the, to the certificates that, that GovGuam still has outstanding? And does this open us up for, for that situation? If it's not been, been.
If I understand the question correctly, I, we don't see that there's a contractual obligation that could be breached for the government owing and not paying, because a contribution, the, the government's tax credit obligation is triggered upon the contribution being made. And if there's no contribution made, there's no, there's no obligation on the government to issue the tax credit program, I mean, tax credits.
Okay.
This time, no, no contribution, no credit.
Okay.
And if I can add, tax credits are issued for specific purposes. Likewise, QC's are all issued for specific purposes. They don't intersect, they don't cross over. So if a purpose is not being fulfilled, a tax credit will not be issued. Our compliance department works with the, the entity receiving the, the tax credit authorization throughout the whole process. There's monthly reportings, as well as annual reportings, that they must submit to GITA before, so, and we do our due diligence to ensure that they're meeting the objective of the tax credit that the legislature authorized.
So basically, maybe a lot of their, their inactivity is, or, is because they're not adhering to all the, what the legislature has spelled out?
Well, not necessarily, I mean, like in the case of DOE, they have a million dollars in there for public school sports facilities. They've not come to ask for that million, because they have a list of 10 million, so 1 million's not enough. But so they're not availing the millions, right there sitting in the books.
Okay. Thank you. Thank, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Senator Luhon. Senator Canata?
No, no further comments, ma'am. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Senator. Senator Sinagastin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, I support this bill. This bill, whatever I can agree to. But my only question is that, it's a tax, it's a tax break? What role has revenue and tax played in this? When the law was passed, they're going to give a tax credit. At what point did revenue and tax get involved to monitor, to make sure that GITA gives the green light, they're going to get a tax break, and revenue and tax is ready to make sure that the numbers match, and it crosses off on the books? Because all tax action is at revenue and tax, it's not at you guys. You do the paperwork, and it's got to go to revenue and tax. That's the bottom line. So my concern is that, you mentioned that some of them are since '98, some 2004. If they didn't do anything for four or five years, why is it even, why hasn't it been reported? I mean, I'm not going to blame you guys, because that's many years already, but I'm only concerned is that, and I, and I agree with the way the bill is written, that we go to sunset it. But I'd like to see it sunset even earlier. If it's '98, now it's the 2008. If it's, if it's 2000, it should have been, you know, we don't need to wait another eight or nine more years from now. The reason why, because the question I would ask, if we're going to sunset it for every applicant, or customer, or business, do they still exist? Does anybody validate that? That, you know, is, I don't know who it was in '98, but does that person still exist? Does that business still exist? I don't, I don't know. I don't normally know if you know that. And if you do, what communication have you made with them to say, are you still going to apply the tax credit or not? And if they're not, like you mentioned, I think it was UOG, right? You talked about the auxiliary, or was it, is that the student affairs?
The UOG Outdoor Multipurpose Sport Complex.
Oh, that's really old done, that's, which one are you talking about? It was an incentive to refurbish? It's not something that the endowment's already doing, that we're already funding in the budget? What? I'm just, I'm just curious about, what is the details of it? So we make sure that we're not, we didn't, the legislature didn't already get involved and already paid for it, or the endowment did it already? Or the business doesn't exist to get any credit? There's no more, no, see, that's the biggest issue, because I support how Senator Titegui put it in, sunset. But why 10 years? That's a long time.
That's 10 years from enactment, though, sir. Not 10 years prospectively, from the.
10 minutes, 10 years from the enactment? Like, in other words, the '98 already expired?
That's correct, correct.
And, and I'm just concerned, because there are some smart lawyers that will go, wait, 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 you can't just do this. You can't just close my books here. I'm just, we've got to be very careful, and that's why, question, eh, is where are you at in the government to determine? They don't, you know, we keep the books clean. They don't exist, whatever. We need to validate every night, dot the i's and cross the t's, please, folks? Because when this goes to the front, when I ask that question, who was in '98? Is that person still alive? That business still exist? Businesses don't exist. Revenue Tax probably says, the business is closed. Hacksamakpos, they're gone. Then it's perfect, shut it down. But if you don't even have an answer to all these, how many of them? 28? How many businesses are inactive or tax credit you got? 25?
There's eight that are inactive.
How many?
Eight programs.
Eight programs? I hacksamakpos, I know that shit have been going a long time. Thank you. Thank you, Madam, Madam Chair, Chairwoman.
All right, thank you, Senator Sinagastin. Senator Titegui, if you'd like to make a closing remarks?
Well, at least I got the appropriation chair to agree to Bill 18. Now I'm just going to have to sit down and talk to him about Bill 17 and the importance of it, you know? I mean, he's overseeing the budget, and we want to make sure that the revenue that he comes out with, that's, well, all of us agree to, that is projected in revenue coming our way to pay for all, all the agencies and things that we really truly need on this island to keep it safe. So just to clarify too, you know, I, I hear what Senator Fisher talked about, you know, regarding making sure the language is clear, because if you have tax credit stating in QC's, which may be concerned, but I did have legal look at this, as well as, if I'm not mistaken, you had your legal, according to Mel, had an opportunity to look at the bills to ensure that we're not stepping on any toes, that we're crossing Ts and dotting our Is, as, as mentioned earlier. But the QC, I believe, falls under Title 12, Chapter 77, while the, yeah, go ahead.
Chapter 58.
58, yeah, Chapter 58, while the tax credit falls under Chapter 77. It's a whole different arena, and then we're only adjusting legislation to that particular chapter, where the discussion is, is on tax credit. So it's important we recognize, but then, of course, I will do my due diligence to ensure that, you know, any concerns relating to that is, is addressed in this legislation, Madam Chair, as we, we look at any changes before the bill is put on this, on session floor. It was clear that you made earlier, Carlos, that this sunset is to begin from the time and of enactment of the program. So of course, the, the programs that were 1998 and further back, of course, will already sunset. It, it's already ended, right? That's your interpretation?
That's correct, but I also, after hearing Senator Sinagastin speak, just going through a scenario in my head, where, for example, in the 1998 Guam Raceway Park, if they have certain tax credits that are in the hopper right now, being processed, and this law goes into effect, it's already, they're already expired. So at the time that they're processing, if they don't get it in before the law expires, I can see where there could be a claim that they should have been able to, to avail themselves of the tax credit. So maybe we can work some additional language to ensure that doesn't happen.
Well, this, this actually, this program for the Guam Raceway Park was the one in 1998.
Right.
That's when it was for, and it has been inactive for how many years?
I understand, but.
But how, how many years has it been inactive?
Since 2015, they have, right?
That's the last time?
That's the last time.
They availed themselves of anything, 2015?
That's correct.
Okay, that is a while still. Okay, so would you recommend that in the event any of these accounts, if, if any of these companies, let's say Guam Raceway Park comes up and says, okay, we, there's a company who's willing to build the ramp for the motocross, you know, race that's coming up, they're going to pay for it, it's going to be, you know, $100,000. And they do this, let's say, before the bill is passed, right?
Right.
Should we then adjust the legislation to, from the time of the last known entry of tax credit available to them? Because then that would mean it starts the clock all over again for another 10 years. You see what I'm saying? So is that some kind of language we could look at, and have your legal also look at that too as well, not just ours? We'll have ours look at it, but if they were to avail themselves of the tax credit, like within the next couple months, then sunset begins from the time of that moment of availing themselves of tax credit?
We'll take a look at it, and we'll run it by our legal and.
See if that's doable. Yeah, because all those other programs, all, the other seven or eight that are out there that's sitting dormant, I don't see it moving forward, but maybe something like this may move forward, so, okay. That's something we can look at, too. And, well, again, I'd like to thank my co-sponsors for this legislation, for co-sponsoring it and believing in fiscal responsibility and providing, you know, accountability, too, for those particular programs that we've, we put forward in legislation, and now it's been sitting there not doing much, where other companies can come forward and avail themselves of these tax credits, and provide to the community, you know, other opportunities for our, our community. So again, I thank Senator Joanne Brown, Senator Perez, Senator Canata, and Senator Luhon for their co-sponsorship on this, and hopefully I'll get the oversight chair of appropriation to be a co-sponsor of Bill 18 at least. Thumbs up, okay.
All right, thank you, Senator Titegui. There's just one more recommendation. Senator Fisher, chair.
Thank you. Senator Titegui, suppose we were to say after 10 years, instead of sunsetting the whole program, it's a constructive abandonment by the recipient. That way, it expires, and it's not our fault, it's their fault. They're the ones who just let it sit. So we could just say they abandoned it, and then we don't have any liability to worry about. We didn't do anything, so.
That sounds good. I would definitely look, look at that. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much, my colleagues, for your participation. So seeing that there are no further testimonies on Bill 18-37, Bill 18-37 has been duly heard. Now to the last item on our agenda, Bill Number 19-37COR, sponsored by Senator Joe S. Sinagastin. It's an act to temporarily waive the levy of taxes pursuant to Section 24103B of Article 1, Chapter 24, Title 11 Guam Code Annotated, relative to real property improvements valued at $1 million or more. Again, I'd like to acknowledge my colleagues, Senator Tom Fisher, Senator Tellow Titegui, Senator Joanne Brown, Senator Jesse Luhon, and Senator Joe Sinagastin. At this time, I'd like to invite the sponsor to provide opening statements. Senator Sinagastin, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On Bill 19-37, as an island still recovering from, from the pandemic, it is important that every citizen is heard and supported. In an effort to provide help to every citizen and to ensure we all thrive as a community, I have authored Bill Number 19-37COR. The property owners who fall under this tax rate has been struggling for some time, especially during the pandemic, for current renters and to find new renters or leases. The temporary waiver of this prob, of this provision will help landlords and tenants across the board, as landlords have committed to ensure the reduction is passed on to their customers. This will assist businesses in keeping their doors open, and residents who rent will get relief as we continue to recover from the last three years. While we may lose up to $6 million or even $8 million, I am confident the general fund will continue to be achieving great numbers as we continue through this fiscal year. I look forward to the bill, having positive testimony from stakeholders, and look forward to the support of my colleagues. Zeus Marsi, thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you, Senator Sinagastin. So notices were sent to Director Shimizu from the Department of Revenue and Taxation, but we have Deputy Director Lozama here today. We also sent notices to Acting Superintendent of the Guam Department of Education, Judy Wampat. So we received a fiscal note on February 16, 2023. It states, "Revenues collected from the cited tax levy are deposited into the Territorial Educational Facilities Fund." It states, "Revenues collected from the cited tax levy are deposited into the Territorial Educational Facilities Fund, utilizing information from the AS400 Financial Management System to obtain data from overall revenues generated for TAF for the past seven fiscal years." The Bureau notes the following average from FY 2016 to 2018. $28.3 million prior to the implementation of Public Law 34-116. From fiscal year 2019 to fiscal year 2022, implementation after Public Law 34-116 collections was $34.6 million. Should the legislation become enacted, waiving this subject tax levy may result in reduced revenue collection for the deposit into the TAF by an approximate average of $6.3 million, thus affecting government operations utilizing this fund source. However, absent information from the Department of Revenue and Taxation relative to tax collections, the Bureau is unable to ascertain whether $6.3 million average difference noted above is solely attributed to revenue collections pursuant to Section 24103B. So we do have Department of Revenue and Taxation, and I'd like to recognize Deputy Director.
Hello. Thank you again for the opportunity to provide testimony. And in this case, it's Bill 19-37, which proposes to temporarily waive the real property taxes for improvements valued at $1 million or more from January 1, 2024 to December 31, 2025. As noted in the fiscal note sent on February 9th, if enacted, this will result in a reduction of at least $8.5 million per year for tax years 2024 and 2025 to the Territorial Education Facilities Fund. And I think just one thing our agency would like to confirm is whether or not the intent of the bills to impact the real property taxes for tax years, real property tax years 2023 and 2024. And the reason for that is payments for real property taxes are made in the subsequent calendar year. So for example, real property taxes for 2022 are actually paid in calendar year 2023. So that's really the gist of our testimony.
Moving forward, Madam Chair. It's moving forward 24, 25. As you identified 22, 23, then move it up one year.
Thank you. All right. Thank you. Is there anyone here that would like to testify on Bill 19-37? Okay. In that case, I'd like to open questions to the sponsor of the bill, Senator Sinagastin. No questions? Or just questions first? No questions?
I keep it simple and I've met with the GARR and they're in support of this because it's to help the renters, help a lot of businesses. Okay, so I'd rather we work with that and then we can deal with this. Because when it talks about the TAF, you know, as my colleagues, as we look at all our budgets, TAF has never come in with everything to begin with. So we've always had to reach to other sources of revenue. So this will be no different. When we do the budget, we look across the board of all our revenue base and we move forward from there. Until we reach a point where everything is recovering, then we start to say, TAF is for this. Healthy Future Fund is for this. Then we can go back to where the funds are supposed to go and we can start settling things. And we can get people to be better managed. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Senator Sinagastin. This question, a follow-up question to Deputy Director. So to provide more clarity, you mentioned that, so the waiving would start for this year, but it'll be reported in the following year. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So is there any language that needs to be adjusted here in the bill to make that more clear?
Gosh, I don't... I'm sorry.
Or is it clear enough?
I have Bennett here again. Bennett Atogu, if I may.
Yes. You're recognized, Mrs. Atogu.
Okay, clarification. Yes, Senators Sinagastin said 2024, up to 2025. Okay. For tax assessment purposes, tax year, assessment year 2023 is collectible up to February 2024. So are you saying that January 1, 2024 to December 1, 2024 is for tax year 2024 or is it for assessment year 2023?
Well, I'd be careful. I notice how you asked that question. Everything is always one year ahead or one year, one year behind. When you pay for '23, you're paying it in, or '22, you're paying in '23. What you pay, '23, you pay in '24, right?
No, okay.
No?
Beginning of assessment year for 2023 to pay is December 15, 2023.
Yes, I know, correct?
Yeah. But in your language, you said January 1, 2024 to December 31, 2025.
So are you recommending then that we change that for December 2023?
No, you may, you know, no, I recommend you say tax assessment year 2023 and tax assessment year 2024.
Okay, I have no problem. I'll have the committee chair make the adjustment.
And then also, what was the other language? Instead of the word, instead, suspend. Won't that be a more, yeah?
Moratorium?
Yeah, the language, instead of the word, waive, suspend, right? Up to the end of 2025.
It says shall be waived. Do you want to change the moratorium?
No, I'm not changing moratorium. I'm just recommending.
What are you recommending, Bennett? What are you recommending?
Use the language suspend.
You want to suspend? Okay.
Yeah, because what is the intent of the law? Just, the intent is to hold, right? For those two years.
The intent is to hold? It's like a moratorium, eh? The same thing as suspend, eh? Just different words spelled differently. But if you choose suspension and if the chair is comfortable, I'm good.
I'm just recommending.
Okay, yes, we do appreciate that and we'll work with the verbiage together with DRT and the sponsor of the bill to make sure that we're on the same page.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I guess, you know, I wish, I guess we have, my question is probably to OFB who's not here, but maybe because the sponsor of the bill. I know in the past budgets, we did offset any shortfalls in a lot of these special funds.
And that even includes TAF.
TAF, okay.
TAF has always been, they've always been, a lot of my colleagues and the people of Guam, I guess, don't realize that TAF is collected throughout the year. It's not like it's all done in January or February. No. You got until the end of, and some folks have a habit of not paying until, towards the end of the year and already we're in the budget. So a lot of it has to be adjusted and then we just see where we can move. And it's not the fault of revenue and tax, it's the payer. It's the taxpayer himself. They're never in a rush and some of them offset it. They'll pay it even six months later after expires. They walk in and says, can we get an extension? Can we set up a payment plan? Next you know, it's later. That's beyond revenue and tax. It's a matter of management and trying to make sure we still get the funding.
But, yeah, so I guess the question is, will the suspension, will there be any offsets offered to help offset the suspension in the property tax?
We won't know until we get to the budget. We get closer to the budget. If this passes, then we know where we're gonna have to make the adjustment. Because it's not until the following year. So it's okay. We got a year to go. We pass one budget, we worry about the next budget.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I'll open the floor to my colleagues for any questions. Senator Tom Fisher.
Thank you very much. Madam Chair, owing to current economic circumstances on island, most people on Guam cannot afford a house. Just, it's simply out of their reach. They're not, can't. I mean, the median house price is $450,000. Imagine if you were a young couple starting out and trying to, trying to come scrape together the down payment. It's just out of reach. That being said, here is a bill that gives a tax break to rich people. So my question, I guess, would be probably better to the author. Could you explain to me, sir, why this isn't a tax giveaway to rich?
A tax giveaway to the rich?
Yes, this is applying to property improvements of 1 million or more.
A million or more and...
My question is, I mean, this is gonna benefit the rich. Why are we doing this?
No, no, these are folks that own duplexes and businesses, mini businesses, and they're trying to find a way to reduce the cost to the renters.
By definition, they're rich people.
Okay. It's your call. If you don't support it, not a problem.
But do you, do you agree or disagree with my characterization?
No, I don't agree with them. They're not rich people. Many people are rich out there. Not many of them have a million dollar homes. Many of them have less, right below the $1 million. They're the $900 or $800.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Senator Joe.
Senator, thank you, Senator. Senator Tadequie.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you, Maria, for being here to testify. I was looking at the territorial fund with regards to the CRER report ending for FY '22. There was a $1.1 million excess revenue in the territorial fund. And so that's good. I mean, unlike all the other special funds, many of them were low, negative, in the negative. So, but this particular one, which has a lot of programs that they assist, especially the schools. According to the fiscal note, it's saying that this is going to now have an effect of approximately $6.3 million, thus affecting the government operation utilizing this fund source. So now, we are probably going to have a negative in the TAF compared to the positive we were having, which is only 1.1 million. So are you familiar with the CRER reports that come out?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I do not have the copy in front of me.
Okay. I always keep all my CRE reports here, you know, and I look at them to make sure, to find out what kind of impact that this bill is gonna have on our, on our budget as well as, you know, what is it gonna affect on other programs that we put forward? Do you, so this is basically gonna be done ahead of time and it's gonna affect, again, I mean, there's some confusion on when exactly it's gonna begin. If I had a building and it's to date over $1 million, which, that includes homes too. If there was a home that was over $1 million, then it would affect that too as well. It's not just businesses, right?
Right.
Anyone who has a home for a million should be kind of rich, you know, have that money. But, so that being the case, it's, I'm doing my taxes now for FY '22, right? This would be implemented in what tax year?
Okay, so the way it's written, it's for January 1, 2024 to December 31, 2025. So it will impact...
My tax year?
2025.
My 2025 tax. So when I file my taxes, this is where, 2025, right? That's two years from now, correct?
Yes.
Okay. You know, I understand doing something like this during COVID, you know, which I think we did, if I'm not mistaken. We had something very similar to this to waive on taxes for certain buildings because of the situation we're in. But now, you know, according to earlier this morning, that we had a public hearing on how we're reaching the peak of the military buildup, you know, the money is rolling in, everything is there, then it doesn't make any sense. Why should we do something that's gonna be two years from now when we're hoping the economy is back at least a little bit up to normal? That we're availing this levy of tax credit or, you know, taxes, which will actually generate 6. some million dollars? Doesn't jive. So, yeah, that's a concern and I understand, you know? I mean, if it was something like it avails themselves of, let's say, FY '24 tax year, you know, we're coming into 20, with '23, or no, I'm sorry, FY '23 tax year, like next year, that probably makes more sense because people are still recovering. We're three years into this, in COVID. I mean, we're starting to pick up again, right? So why would we do something two years down the road? '23, '24, three years down the road? Because you said it would be 2025. Three years down the road. So, yeah, I'd like to look at this and see exactly how much the TAF that will be affected from this, you know? But that's, and if there is any change in our budget, then it would be for the budget of FY '25, right? That's like three years from now. Again, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Tadequie. I just want to make another clarification. So Mrs. Atogu, you're saying that the language that you're recommending is tax assessment year 2023 and 2024. Is that correct?
No, we just needed clarification. We just needed clarification because January 1, 2024 to December 31, 2025, are we talking about the collection period January 1, 2024, beginning January 1, 2024? Now, if that's the case, that will be assessment year 2023.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so I guess if I can clarify the sponsor of the bill, so...
Short clarification, Madam Chair. Exactly what Bennett said. The bill says '24. You're assessing it for the following year?
Yes.
Because you're already collecting for '23. I think you answered it yourself. You just wanted to change the verbiage and I agree with that. Change the verbiage and we're good.
Yeah, because I'm hearing different things coming out right now. I just want to make that clear that, so it's a tax assessment year 2023 and 2024.
Okay.
Because the collection period is January 1, 2024.
Because the reason why is because you have to identify that the period is the part where they start to assess and they identify what the cost will be and they don't collect it until the year later.
The following year, right.
Yeah. You don't, you don't collect things in advance, you create after. It's almost like getting a military retirement. You get it after you serve your time and stay alive.
Yeah, I just want to make that clear because I feel there is a little bit of confusion. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Is that, is that clear?
I'm still, okay, according to Maria, she's saying that this will be a tax, not a credit, but a relief, tax relief for FY, I mean, not FY, for the year January 2025, correct? So that means that when I, in FY 20, or the following year in 2026, when I file my taxes, it would be based on '25. Now, that's, that's what I'm thinking, but now I'm hearing something different too. So really trying to understand what year this is.
So I apologize and what we, so what it is, is as Bennett mentioned, it's assessed through December 15. So I guess what's causing or adding to the confusion is it's the waiver. I guess the bill's written, the waiver is from calendar year January 1. So...
Of what year? Of January 1?
2024 is the bill's...
2024. So this will give that tax relief for the year of 2024?
It would, so the way, if I, if I understand it correctly, it's, and perhaps we, like I said, we prefer suspension of real property taxes that are assessed through December 15, 2023. Is that correct?
No, the way the bill's written, it says '24, January to December 2020. You gotta finish up the...
And I guess, I guess maybe to Senator Fisher's point on a previous bill, you know, perhaps to further clarify because as opposed to, you know, assessment, you know, assessment and payment are two different things. So I guess that's where we likely will need just further clarification. So, so I guess... So Senator Taidegui, so as Bennett mentioned again, you know, it's assessed through December 15, and then it becomes due the following year, right? February, two installments, one February 20, and then April, you know? So it'll be 2024 is when it's due.
Okay. 2024, when it's due.
Due.
So you're availing this of '23, right?
Yes. So December 15, will, the period will end. The assessment period, yeah. I'm sorry. Collection.
Collection. So it's the year of 2023 that's availing themselves?
No.
No?
That's why the bill is written, and you guys had it right. You assess it on '24, you pay it the following year. You pay it in February and April. So remember, you asked, change the word to suspend? Shall be suspended for the period of January '24 to December, right? That will give you your two years. You assess it, you send the bill for them to pay. Nobody files anything, folks. Nobody, there's no filing, there's no, this is not your 1040. This is a property tax. Revenue tax generates the bill, your tax levy, property tax, and you just pay it. Very simple. Am I correct, Bennett? Are we good now? I know Bennett's writing it down. She's the real property administrator.
Madam Chair, if I may, you know, maybe if they can just reassess this to simplify the verbiage on the recommendation and to let us know, my concern is, what year are these individuals, people who own million-dollar buildings plus, going to be able to avail themselves of this waiver? You know, what year is that year going to be? Okay. The intention, according to the author of the bill, the intention was to avail that of 2024, correct? Okay. So that tax year 2024 is your intention. But it's sounding differently, and then I think maybe if you guys can come back to us with something in writing to kind of clarify that and work with your attorneys. I mean, we've got a lot of them over there now, I hear. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Yeah, I think that that's a very important point. We need to pin down what year that we are going to waive or suspend the tax because does it affect the current budget cycle? It does, it does not affect the current budget cycle?
Doesn't affect the current or the upcoming budget?
Okay. So then we need the language. Let's, we can continue to work on the language. Okay. Senator Brown, if you have any questions?
Not so much. But I do want to note, as I noted this morning, my observation this afternoon, I don't see any presence of the private sector here that a couple of years ago were clamoring for this legislation, including the Realtors Association that you mentioned, the main sponsor. I just want to note that for the record. I was wondering if they were still here on island because sending out a message is just very, 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 very quiet, I think, on these issues that are before us that have significant impact on the costs and operations of our government. So just want to note that for the record, Madam Chair. Thank you.
All right. Senator, thank you, Senator Brown. Yeah, we did send out the, I think GAR is part of the stakeholder list. So we could definitely make more of an effort in the future. So thank you for that suggestion. Senator Fisher, I know you had a follow-up question.
Yes, thank you. It's about the word suspend. I'm not sure, legally, I'm not sure what it means because if I have a tax liability for this year and next year, yet it was suspended, does that mean in the third year it comes due? Or it is just forgiven? It's the word suspend that bothers me. Suspend means it's still in existence.